I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:30 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Here.
Councilmember Shockley? Absent. Vice President LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Vice President LeBlanc, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, you may exit out either door number one behind you or the doors which you came into council chambers and exit out onto the front lawn or to the back parking lot. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of November 14th, 2022, November 29th, 28th, 2022, and November 29th, 2022.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Discussion? Councilor Ludwig.
The only change that I wanted to request was, I believe it was the 14th. I had spoken at public comment and I had produced a document that I wanted included in the minutes. I had handed that in to the clerk, but I don't see it in our file here, so I don't know, Ms. Amatrono, if you still have that, or I can provide another copy, but I did want that included.
Okay, I will.
I'd be open to if councillor wanted to amend the motion. We can move the 14th to another date when it's complete.
Sure. So can I ask to amend the motion to only the November 28th and 29th for approval for tonight?
Motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Second by Vice President LeBlanc. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
We're back to the amended motion. This is now just the November 28th and 29th minutes. I did have one. See here. Nope, that was on the 14th. My one edit that I wasn't able to get in for November 28th, page four of the minutes, 23 of our packet, line 155, welcomed, should be welcomed instead of welcome. And see what 29th. That was it for me. Any further discussion on the November 28th and 29th minutes? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item two, public acknowledgements and commendations. Black History Month proclamation. Whereas the history of democracy in the United States is one of struggle and triumph, equality and freedom denied from the beginning to black Americans, were only made truer as our country made strides to embody our founding ideals. Black History Month, first proposed by scholar Carter G. Woodson in 1926, seeks to rightfully center the role of black Americans in our national narrative to tell a fuller story of our country. And whereas this year's theme, Black Resistance lifts up the perseverance of black Americans against entrenched oppression, violence, and discrimination from our nation's founding through to this day. We honor the generations of black organizers, thought leaders, scholars, artists, and everyday people who have fought to realize this nation's promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas let us commit to defending the hard-won progress we've made toward equality, liberty, and opportunity for all, and continue to advance this ongoing cause. We must not forget the men and women who worked tirelessly for freedom, civil rights, and equality for all people, and whose deeds helped to broaden and enrich American culture. Now therefore, I, Hillary Lima, council president in the town of Coventry, Rhode Island, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in the town of Coventry, and I urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. So I just put this forward this year. We started kind of with the theme of last year of talking about inclusivity, equality. And I invite any other council members who would like to consider something similar in later, later in the year to approach me with those ideas. I will talk more about some of the other ones I had on my radar for the remainder of the year during council president communications. Thank you. Clerk, I'll direct you to transmit this into the record accordingly. We'll now move on to item three, public hearings and public comment on docketed items only. We'll start with public comment on docketed items only. Are there any members of the public here for public comment on docketed items? Anyone on Zoom? Going once, going twice, three times. Public comment on docketed items is now closed. We'll now move on to public hearing, item A, petition for zone change from R20 residential half acre to general business. AP 32 Lot 78 Zone R20, 96 Tyok Avenue, owner Joanne A. Plant, applicant John Vitkovich. Do we have anyone here? Oh, I'm sorry. First I need to open public hearing. Can I have a motion? Oh, it's still open. But I have to open it for the second one. The second item. Yeah. I believe Mr. Vitkovich is here. If you could just come to the podium, state your name and address with the record, please. Please make sure the mic is on. Just push it up, push up the, the.
Thank you. John Vitkovich, 119 Homack Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, 02871. Oh, Joanne. Plant.
Do you have anything to add? You had asked to continue it to this date.
Joanne sent the town clerk an email today. It was forwarded to Planet Derby. I can read the email to you. Did Joanne, did you get it? Okay. Okay.
So the town council makes the agenda. I don't know why this would have been forwarded to the planning director.
It was voted to the clerk.
I just, I just found out about the, the, this email that you sent literally as I sat down tonight.
Joanne, the owner sent it. I did not send it. Joanne sent it. The one that I'm talking about.
Okay.
I have it right here.
She sent it to the planning director?
She sent it to Joanne, the clerk.
Okay.
You have a copy of this email?
What?
You have a copy of this email?
Yeah. So this didn't get to my email until after 5:00 PM this evening. And I'm not quite sure why the planning director is forwarding it to me and why it wouldn't have come to me first. And none of the other council members received this notice. And the only reason they're receiving is because there's a copy of it here on the desk. And is there a reason your client couldn't be here this evening?
She's, she's, first of all, she's not doing well and she's up in Maine. Second of all, her attorney from Warwick was supposed to be here. He's ill and he recommended another attorney, which is all contained in the email that was sent to Joanne. His wife is a school teacher. They're on vacation this week. So the request was to preserve her legal options to extend this to March, March 24th, I believe is your next council meeting. So she can have legal representation here as it is a public hearing. I'm a realtor. I'm a general contractor. This has gone beyond my level. So this is the owner speaking, not me.
Okay. This is, this is a little frustrating for me. We're now doing this a third time. And this is also not the best way to get off on a relationship with who would could be your potential neighbors who have now come out multiple times. So I just, and I have a tough time too. I did receive notice and I know that other councillors did. You made some terse phone calls to some of these residents.
I spoke to Mr. Dove. He called me back on Sunday or Monday. He was not terse. He's, his views, and I respect his views. And his views were that it's going to lower his property value. As a realtor, I do not agree. If my disagreement that it's going to lower his property value is terse, that's not it. But, you know, he's here, I'm here, and Joanne did, the owner of the property did go through all of the motions. We, twice we went to the planning board. And that's, you know, eight to nothing the first time, eight to one the second time. So, and then we had to wait. We were delayed before we can come to your council. And on December 12th, it was your council because you weren't here. That continued it to January. So this is our, this is our second continuation. We didn't continue it in December. You did. This council did on December 12th.
Okay. I'm not going to argue with you back and forth. But I, I do, I do find it kind of disrespectful that less than, than two hours before our meeting, we get notice of a request to continue like that. That, you know, we have, we have a lot of business we're planning to put for the council. So I would appreciate much more notice than that. At the, I mean, we don't have time, a lot of the time to review things before it comes before the council, especially if it comes that late.
That's right.
And I would appreciate to, to the clerk, if things like this could be forwarded directly to, to me instead of, I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's a procedure that it has to go through the planning director first before it comes to me or.
I, I didn't send it to the planning director. It was sent directly to me. I was out of the office when it came through at 10:00 of 4:00. So I didn't receive it until I came back. And Ed had already made a copy of it and spoke to the solicitor. So I knew you already had it. So I didn't forward it at that point.
And it's my understanding that Joanne sent it to Mr. Derby also, as well as the clerk.
Yeah, at 5:00. So, members of the council, I assume that you were, saw this when you sat down. You don't have a copy?
No.
So I'll send it down, but basically at 3:40 PM, Ms. Plant sent a note to, it looks like the clerk, Ms. Amatrono, saying she'd like to continue it, copying Mr. Vitkovich. Mr. Vitkovich then forwarded on to the planning director. And then the planning director forwarded on to me, Mr. Wazika and the town solicitor, asking for another continuance. So at this time, I'd ask, what's the pleasure of the council this evening? Councilman Pasqua?
I would like to vote on this. And I'm tired of putting it off. We have other business to do.
Vice President LeBlanc?
I would just ask for the solicitor's opinion of whether or not he believes that this should be tabled or if we could vote on it tonight.
Solicitor Angel?
Out of an abundance of caution, I would grant the continuance contingent upon the applicant. Then the council can do this, impose any cost of re-advertising upon the applicant as a condition of it being, of, of it being heard at the next scheduled date. In and as part of your vote, you would leave the public hearing open. But you continue it to a date certain for hearing.
And I'm not certain that the 24th is actually the meeting, the next meeting date.
I did check with the clerk and that was the date that I was given. Why don't you ask the clerk?
The 24th is a, March 24th is a Friday. So it would be on Friday. So it would be, Joanne, what is, what are the two meeting dates in March?
14.
Looks like the 14th and 28th. Can you confirm? So the 14th and the 28th are the dates that we meet in March. What's the pleasure of the council?
The 14th.
It's one of the better.
Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing on this item, the proposed zoning change for 96 Tyok Ave? And impose the cost of re-advertising on the applicant? And leave the public hearing open?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. Discussion? Hearing none? Yes.
Ms. Plant will be represented by attorneys. I don't, and I don't have their calendar, their schedule. And that's fine if we want to go to the 14th. But I just have to make sure that that attorney that's on vacation this week was, you know.
We have to, we have to pick a vote tonight.
Okay, no, I'm saying no, but would it be prudent to pick the March 28th date or March 14th date? That's all I'm asking.
We're going to do the 14th.
Thank you.
We'll go to a vote. Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes.
We, after the proclamation, we kind of jumped into the next agenda item. We didn't do comments. So I did just want to see if we could offer a comment on that before we move on.
Oh, the proclamation?
Yeah.
Can, can you reserve it till my council president communications? We're going to talk about that then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Public hearing, item B, new Class B liquor license with new victualling and live show entertainment. Application by Truffle Fry Incorporated doing business as Lake Taco, 446 Tyok Ave, Coventry. Justin Dalton Amin. Can I have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Dalton Amin, 91 Osprey Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island, 02879.
Josh Culpo, 112 Monty Street, East Brenner Shore Island, 02818.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have before us tonight for consideration a new Class B liquor license with new victualling and live show entertainment licenses. I'll open it up to discussion from council members to start. Councilor Ludwig.
Would it be okay to hear from the business owners, just a little bit of what they're envisioning?
Absolutely. If you guys want to just talk about what, what you work on.
Yeah, definitely. We're, we're owners of Black Oak Restaurant right down the road. So our, a real estate broker friend of ours told us that Morris Tavern was becoming available for sale, so we jumped on it. So we're trying to do a concept that's not really gonna kind of self-cannibalize with, with Black Oak. So Black Oak's really like a American comfort food restaurant. Here we're going more taco and tequila bar concept. We're going to be smoking all our meats in-house. You know, there, it's just a really beautiful spot and it kind of, you know, it was, there was a lot of walls and it was kind of all closed in when we went in there. Our, our, our visions really to open it up and let kind of the true like beauty of the, of the, of the place kind of shine through. So it's a different concept for us for sure. We, we, all of our, we've got five restaurants in Rhode Island and Boston. They're all kind of comfort food, family-friendly neighborhood spot, which I mean, we intend to keep that part. But in terms of not offering what Black Oak offers is, is what we're trying to do. So something a little bit outside of our comfort zone, but we're excited. And our chefs are really pumped up about it and they're the ones who've kind of, they've taken our, our, our idea and kind of started to run with it. So they really wanted to get the smoking aspect in there and we thought that kind of went hand in hand. So, you know, it's, it went from a taco and tequila bar to more like an Austin, Texas style marriage of the, of the smoked meats and the, and the tacos. But really neighborhood spot, that's our core, just making a comfortable place in the community where people can get together. You know, that's what, that's what it's all about for us.
Any questions from members of the council? Solicitor Angel?
That's right. I had some, some questions for the chair if I might. Have, have the bartenders been tip certified yet?
Yeah, we don't anticipate it being ready to open till September with, with the work. But yeah, all our restaurants, all our bartenders are tip certified and that's updated and submitted to each town that we operate in every year. But that's very important to us. Responsible service is very important to us. Josh and I started as bartenders a long time ago and, and understand how important that is and how critical to, to running a successful business, taking care of that, that side of everything.
Open until September?
That's what we're, we've got a fair amount of work. The place needed some little TLC.
So you haven't, you haven't hired the folks who are going to be tip certified then?
We have, between our restaurants, we have a healthy amount of staff and we usually bring a lot of people over. So just because they know the way we like things done and we know them to be responsible employees.
Given, given that the construction isn't complete, you don't have a certificate of occupancy yet?
No, we're here more to, you know, for the, the application to be approved, but not issued until we, and this is how we do most of our projects, six to eight months of work. And then we have all our tip certification of our up-to-date employees and everything. We submit that to the town before the license is issued.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, this is a fairly new council and they're not necessarily accustomed to state law requirements with respect to this. That's why the council president asked me to talk about this. So I'm going to assume because there's no CO, you haven't had a fire inspection yet because they can't do a fire inspection without the CO and construction being finished.
Correct. I, I've been in contact with the fire marshal, Mr. Manny, I believe a couple of times now. Just he kind of gave me the rundown on what needed to be updated in order to get the CO.
Sure.
But yeah, we understand all that. Definitely.
And, and so your health, have you applied? So there's no health department inspection, food handling permits? Or development of a menu yet? That kind of thing?
For this application, they asked a menu. So it's more just kind of, this is the general idea. But yeah, all that stuff will be submitted before we would expect to, for the license to be issued.
Thank you. If I may, counsel, Madam President, Mr. Vice President. So in situations like this, if you were to grant all of these licenses tonight, you were granting contingent upon the provision of the information that I talked about and you're delegating the duty to the clerk to ensure that this information gets in. And having dealt with this in other municipalities, that is what's called a non-delegable duty. It is your duty as the council, as the licensing board to ensure compliance. If they're going to open in September, then my recommendation would be to continue this matter and application as it sits until August. And at that point, they should have everything that they need for the council to do its due diligence and to be on file with the clerk. That's my legal advice and that's, that's, that's my advice to you tonight. If they're ready sooner, then obviously it can be taken off the shelf and come back soon. That, that's my recommendation.
Madam Clerk, what are our meeting dates on the calendar in August? Looks like the 8th and the 22nd. Can you just confirm?
Can I just ask a question about that? So in the past, in, you know, and we've come in front of the different councils, the different towns we operate in, it would be a situation where the license is granted but not issued. I think that's what you're talking about. And then the clerk never, has never issued us anything until that whole packet is given to them and they kind of sign off on it.
I, and I understand that that may be practice in other municipalities, but that's a misapplication of the law. I can tell you that flat out. I do this in the city of Cranston, for example. Under no circumstances do we grant licenses until a full package is in because there's a non-delegable duty. In other words, the law doesn't say that this council can delegate those duties to the clerk for her to make sure that everything is in. They can't do it. They just can't do it. The council has to know from the clerk that these things have been complied with. So.
August 8th and August 22nd.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I would make a motion to continue this to August 8th. But if the applicant is ready before then, if you could reach out to the town clerk to let us know. But for, for now, I would like to continue it to August 8th.
Does he have to say to keep the hearing open too? No. We have a motion on the floor from Vice President LeBlanc. Do you have a second? Second from Councilman Pasqua. Discussion? Councilor Ludwig.
This is just the vote on moving the date, but the public hearing is still open? Okay, I'll save my comment.
Any further discussion? Councilman Pasqua?
Thank you guys for coming in tonight. First of all, appreciate it. I'm glad to see something happening over there. I did reach out to, to Fire Marshal Mann from Anthony when I saw this and I asked him, he said they had a little bit of communication, but they, they were very early in the process. So I tend to agree that we should, we should table it once, if you guys are ready before that, you know, before August by all means, but yeah.
Any further discussion on the mo- motion to continue? Hearing non-clerk, please take the, oh, sorry, Vice President LeBlanc.
Do you have a comment?
I just, well, I just had it so, and I'm not trying to argue this. In the past, we've only signed leases on, on spaces that we've opened, right? So we've never been out, we, the lease was never executed until the liquor license was granted, but not issued because we couldn't go into a space saying, well, we don't know if this is going to happen, you know? So it isn't really, we're here, we, we bought, this is our, the first building we've purchased. So it's different for us because we, we don't, we're not worried about if we're, if the landlord is going to kick us out or anything. But more so typically when we open, the CO is issued to us. That's the last step usually. We, we hit that to the clerk and then we can open the next day. And with what we're talking about here, and I totally understand where we're coming from. But CO gets issued now, we're waiting another month potentially to come in front of you guys to get, you know what I'm saying, to get that issued. So it just is.
Do you have an idea of when you anticipate the CO to be issued?
No, I mean, it's, I mean, construction's one of those things where I'm saying September, but it could, people sometimes say what year, you know, it's one of those things where it's just, it takes a long time. So.
Well, we do meet more often than other councils. Most of the councils meet once a month. We do meet twice.
Gotcha.
And if you're able to get to us the Friday before a Tuesday meeting, we can do our, make our, do our best to get you on to an agenda.
Cool.
So we do meet quite frequently and we actually do add meetings.
a lot of the time. I think everybody would know. So
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I, I'm someone who's lived in this area my whole life. I was a kid that had banquets at that Nino's all the time and this community is really excited about this. And you know, I certainly would like to try, you know, find a way to make sure that we support anyone who's wanting to do business here. And I'm certainly not looking to make it harder on you. I know how many hoops you have to jump through. But I do also want to make sure that we're in legal compliance as well. You know, because at the end of the day, if anything happens with you guys liability wise, our butts are on the line too.
Totally understand.
So I to- totally, totally get it. And you know, I actually, if you want here, before you come down from the podium, feel free to take my card. It has my cell on it. And feel free to give me a call if, if things come up sooner or if you hit any, you know, I, I don't want to make it more difficult for you.
No, I appreciate that. And we're, we're excited. I mean, it's construction's, you know, hell on earth sometimes, but once you like, usually when we get to the end, it's like, oh, the place looks great and the neighborhood likes it. So we're excited.
Yeah, the community is very excited. We've all seen the buzz. So.
Better have Taco Tuesdays, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Wood or gas?
It's this, it's a, it's gas with like a wood pellet is what we're looking at right now. But nothing has been purchased or I, I, I've told a couple of people that and they've kind of given me the side eyes. So yeah, it's just making it all work. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Councilman Pasqua.
I do have a question. Maybe this is for Solicitor Angel. So I guess my understanding is at times when you purchase a business, you purchase it with a liquor license. So it'd be a transfer, not so much a new one. Why is, is that typical, how typically how that goes? Is this, why is this different?
Well, talking with the town and in terms of facilitating this whole deal, it, it seemed like it was a better move to let the previous owner's license expire and then apply for a fresh one without being, I mean, we weren't really sure what was going on with his business. And it was more just property deal than a business purchase with him. So we kind of, in talking, in talking with Jean from the town, and she's kind of been my go-to and doing all this license application. It was determined, let's let that one expire and just start fresh and have no potential liability that's maybe attached to the previous owner. Come on to us. That was kind of how it was pitched.
Makes sense. Gotcha. Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion to table? I'm sorry, motion to continue. My apologies. Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember, Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Any further discussion from council members? Oh, you want me to call him back? Okay. Any comments from members of the public on that particular item? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second from Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item six, report of the town manager, update of Edward Bazika. Any updates this evening?
Just a quick, a couple of quick ones in reference to the Arnold Road project, the solar, the lease and the solar power agreement. That paperwork is nearly complete. It's, as soon as it is, it will be passed down to the solicitor for final approval. And then at that point, the, the next person in this seat will get it in front of the council ASAP to finalize that. I'd hope to do it, but the paperwork has not been completed and I wasn't about to rush it. But I wanted it done correctly. So hopefully by the end of the week and we'll be, I might be able to get it over to Solicitor Angel before I leave. We had, as some of you know, we had the, the OMA and the APRA as well as ethics training on, on the 8th of February. We had about 60 employees and, and members attend from various boards and commissions. I thought it was a very successful and informative evening until I fell out of my seat. But aside from that, it wasn't too bad. And the CIP budget has been compiled. It's in the hands of the planning commission. And they will review it for comp plan compliance. And that'll be done tomorrow, tomorrow on that. So the CIP budget is with them. And I'm just finally cleaning it up and making it look pretty. But they've got all the documents and they will approve that and that'll be presented by the next town manager for part of the budget process. But that is, that will be completed. That phase of it.
And that, we're just keeping balls in the air until
next one.
Any questions for the town manager? Thank you very much. And just to confirm, your last day is Friday, the 4th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on to item seven, report of other town officers and officials, update of Robert Savetti CPA interim finance director. Any updates, Mr. Savetti?
At this point, we're still moving forward. So getting all the transactions posted. Trying to go through all the transfers at this point. So making progress. The day-to-day activity is getting recorded in real time. So it's a matter of still going back and just picking up wire transfers. We believe all the cash receipts have been entered at this point. Now, just on the disbursement side, some of the wire transfers and ACH transactions, we have to go back for the past 18 months and try to capture those and get those recorded in the system. But we are making, I think, significant progress. We did have a visit from an IRS agent last week. Stopped in the office last Thursday regarding intent to levy. There's some delinquent penalties related to 2020, 2021 Form 941s and also Form 720. So I'm working with them on that. Unfortunately, it already went through the process with the service center, the IRS service center, where they denied a request to waive some of the penalties. So the agent couldn't do anything at this point. So we have to fill out the paperwork, try to put an appeal, you know, have them process an appeal. And we'll go from there. But I'll keep you updated. Right now it's approximately a $58,000 levy or fine. But I'm hoping we can get that waived with some work. So I'll be working on that.
Any questions for the Vice President LeBlanc?
With the magnitude of having to go back 18 months, you've been here since January 4th, I believe. Do you have like an estimated timeframe of how long that's going to take you to get through?
Again, I'm still optimistic that we can have the prior year closeout beginning of May to have the audit started. Again, we're keeping up with the day-to-day. So hopefully if we hit that timeframe, all the current year stuff's in there and we'll, you know, we'll be on a good timeframe. Really, it's just a matter of trying to be able to do day-to-day and then get back. Because as you know, we have to go into each bank statement, try to see the activity that was posted, find the transactions and then record it. We're trying to get everything rather than journalizing everything. We're doing everything through disbursements or through cash receipts. So the vendor information is in the system. Because if I just, you know, post everything by a journal entry, we're not going to have some of the information of who the vendor is. So.
Understood. I just, when you say year end, just for the public's knowledge, I believe you're meaning fiscal year end, which is June, June, or by May. So I guess where I'm trying to get to is when will this council get a budget to actual that we can actually look at? Because if you're saying June 30th of 2022 by May, I'm just concerned that we're not going to have any real financial information to make smart decisions financially.
Hopefully for your March 20, I think I just started the March 28th meeting. I'd be able to get a lot of the information in there. I'm not going to say it's going to be 100% accurate, but we'd have, hopefully at that time, we'd have most of the transactions posted and that we'd have somewhat reliable information. Again, your budget, actual information. You know, disbursements that go through the door via check, those are recorded in the system, obviously, because it's an integrated system.
Sure.
The payroll, which is significant expenditure as well as the related healthcare costs, you know, that should be for the most part in the system.
Big expenses, yeah.
So the bigger expenses are in there. It's really a lot of the things that affect the cash accounts, which are, you know, wire transfers. For an example, we were showing on the books that we owed IRS taxes of over $3 million. State taxes over $2 million because the withholdings and all those things weren't getting processed because those come out automatically either through the electronic filing system or through ACH transactions. And those transactions aren't recorded.
So just like accumulating or just sitting there and it just wasn't getting recorded. So it wasn't bringing any damage.
And again, because the accounts weren't reconciled, at least not reconciled in the general ledger.
Got it.
Those transactions weren't posted.
So maybe something by end of March.
I'm hoping the end of March we'd be able to have.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Savetti? Thank you very much. Update of Steven Angel, Town Solicitor?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, resolutions of the council. Item A, Resolution 2023-14, ratification of interim finance director contract. This is on page, pages 49 to 54 in your packet. Mr. Bazika, did you want to or Mr. Angel just introduce us or write some upfront?
This is definitely the contract involved in Savetti. It's been languishing. We hadn't had a chance to finalize everything. We finally got it done and actually just wanted to get it ratified by the contract. This is a document that you, that I believe you received a copy of this back a month or so ago.
Okay. The resolution before us, whereas in the town of Coventry, since January 4th, 2023, Robert Savetti CPA has functioned as the interim finance director for the town of Coventry. And the town council has been requested to ratify Mr. Savetti's contract. Contract. Which formalizes the terms and conditions of his consultancy and now therefore be resolved at the honorable town council, Mr. Mr. Savetti's contract dated December 29, 2022 is hereby ratified. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilman Pasqua. Just have a friendly amendment in there. I believe that's contract in the second bullet. We can just, Madam Clerk, if we can make that edit. Discussion from members of the council. Council Ludwig.
I just had a question in regards to and let's see this, it's on page 52 of 65 of the packet or page four of the I don't know what to describe it as.
The contract.
The contract. So when it says that we can request for Mr. Savetti to perform additional services not contemplated by the letter for an hourly rate ranging from 100 to 185, would we, how would we know that it's outside of the contract? Is that, he would have to tell us?
That would not be done without council approval. That, that would not go, it would have to be ratified by the council to engagement and other services outside the scope of this.
Okay. And then one other question was, so I think when we talked, it was back in January. So this is kind of like a contractor type, like a individual contractor type pay as opposed to like a salaried employee.
Correct.
So is the $100 an hour, does that align with the the budget that we currently have for the finance manager?
That is, that is in excess of that. And this is one of those areas where it's a one-time occurrence. And this would be appropriate for APRA funds for for payment out, out of this. I think everybody can see already, Mr. Savetti has been worth every dime that we're paying him in reference to where he's going and what he's uncovering. Yes, it's over and above what we pay the finance director. But this isn't, he's not the finance, he's the interim finance director. He's more than that. He's fixing and analyzing and resolving two years' worth of issues that have been dumped onto us. So it's not just a normal course of what a finance director would do. He's going above and beyond. That's why we've engaged someone like him to do this.
So I, I would be in favor of looking at the at APRA or another source to make up the difference. We keep hearing that some of these fees are outside of what we've already budgeted for. So I'm, I'm concerned. I just, I just don't want to hit the, the next couple of months. And then all of a sudden it's like, we, we do not have the budget for this. And now we have to go into general fund. So I, I would like the council to consider that, to make up the difference from the budget out of APRA funds. Or if there's another way, that would be great. I just can't think of one right now.
So I'm glad you mentioned that. I actually did ask ahead of our meeting next week, which we continued that resolution about spending, giving ARPA funds to the fire districts. I had asked for Mr. Savetti to prepare a memo on the status of ARPA funds as they currently stand. What's been expended? When did we receive all the funds? How many do we, how much do we have left, et cetera? So that way we can make an informed decision for that. So that information should be forthcoming ahead of our meeting next week.
Thanks.
Any further discussion from members of the council? One thing that struck me, but now I'm rereading it again, and I think it makes sense. On page two of the contract, page 50 of the packet, letter E, direct supervision of all staff, employees and subcontractors tied by the town of Coventry. Does that need a qualifier of just in the finance department? It kind of sounds like, like all, all. I take it your intent is just for those in the finance staff, correct? You don't want to be in charge of everybody?
That's correct. I often look at the, the language you're referring to. I know sometimes in that management's responsibility is those skills to supervise the entire staff.
Yeah, that's.
You are responsible for the following. Yeah, you are, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see. You're responsible for the following. Provide.
The town's responsible for that. I was telling you it's responsible for my.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, that makes sense then. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Comment on the the finances. Keep in mind that even within the finance department's budget, it's possible that there's some radical bail. Look in at some of the budgets, you know, what was budgeted fail. So there may be room within the budget of the finance department. But then keep in mind, obviously, as a subcontract at this point, that they're not relying on retention, not relying on how they're paid for vacations, sick time, holidays. So there may be some, so it's in addition to the budget, which requires I'll perform it, but it's also possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Or in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item 8B, Resolution 2023-15, ratification of town council rules for 2022 to 2024 term. So on pages 55 to 65 in your packet, the resolution reads, whereas in the town of Coventry, town council rules are essential to the orderly process of facilitating and conducting town council business. And the attached town council rules for the 2022 to 2024 term have been considered by the town council and are deemed to be acceptable to effectuating the orderly process of facilitating and conducting town council business. And now therefore be resolved, the honorable town council, the town council rules for the 2022, 2024 term are hereby adopted in all respects as to the intended purposes stated therein and in all other respects as so stated therein. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pasqua, discussion? Council Ludwig.
I have around four items to take a look at. So the pandemic was obviously not foreseen. So when everyone had to go to Zoom, we did, we did originally talk about council members adopting the same council members adopting the same decorum as public participation on the Zoom cameras. So for example, um, not smoking uh, or eating or things like that, um, while we're on camera. So I'm just wondering if, if any of this would kind of cover that already? Um, or if we can insert, insert that in as the expectation that if for some reason we have to go back to that, the council rules apply even on Zoom meetings if an emergency is declared. Um, so I wanted to consider that. The, the second item. On page three of seven or fifty seven of sixty five of the packet. The docket item submission deadline being six business days prior to the filing deadline. I know some things come up that are a little bit last minute. I, I don't know how many submissions you're getting to be put on the agenda. I think I've maybe asked for one in the last three or four months. So I'm just wondering, can we be a little more flexible with the six days? Maybe four days, something like that.
I mean, I mean, ultimately it's, it's up to, uh, council leadership, um, to make the determination what goes on the agenda. So, um, you know, certainly there's flexibility there. I think just, um, quite frankly, making the first couple of agendas since getting into leadership. It was just complete overrun the day of or the night, the afternoon before the day to file an agenda. And it, I, I have a day job, like I can't spend my whole day going back and forth with Joanne. I love Joanne. But I can't spend my day going back and forth with Joanne on the phone with Mr. Wazika, the solicitor, department heads, like that's just unmanageable. So my intent with this was if you could please get it to me by then, and the process we've been doing now is what I do is that Friday, the, before the week of the filing deadline. So like this agenda I had sent as a preliminary draft back on February tenth. Just so people had an idea, the clerk, council leadership, the town manager, the solicitor, um, to start seeing how it was taking shape then to try and get out in front of it. So, um, I, I, I think that the flexibility is there. It's, you know, the discretion of the council leadership, but I do really want to emphasize getting things to, to the clerk and myself as soon as possible because I just, it's there's, it, it, it really places a huge burden that we don't need to have, um, if we can just plan ahead. So I hope that, I hope that makes sense. And I hope that that seems fair.
The other item I wanted to ask about was, um, resolutions or proclamations. We had kind of an, um, a general agreement in the last council to have two members, um, want to sponsor proclamation or resolution, something like that. Um. Maybe we can put something about how we want to do that to, to put in the rules as well. I mean, we didn't, we didn't have to write it down last time. So maybe it's just a general understanding. I'd be okay with that. Um, but I, I figured I'd call it out. So, so I'll just give you one example. So I love the proclamation you did earlier. I would actually love for it to say from the whole council. I think it would. I think it'd be great to have everyone say the town council of Coventry supports this initiative. I don't, I don't think we need a rule on that. I'm just making an observation. So, um, we can do that informally. I'd like to hear from the other members if they want something more formal, like written in here. And then, um, after hearing from others, we can figure out whether I want to make an amendment or not.
Mm hmm. So, um, the reason I didn't put it in writing, um, is because I don't believe you should have to to get other support for some, to submit something on an agenda. If one person wants to submit it, that's enough for me. Um, I think we're, we're all individuals that represent different districts and um, I think everybody should have an opportunity to get something on the agenda, whether it has support of one person or two, two people. And I also think that the whole notion of having to get two people to support, I think could get dangerous in terms of OMA. Uh, so I wanted to avoid that. So that's kind of where I stood there. Um, and, uh, point well taken on the proclamations. Um, I had just continued that, um, kind of most of proclamations we did, um, were, were Anne's signature and she here on two set her hand, but, um, some, some other ways that they do it and other, other towns and even at the general assembly is, um, all council members can sign, put their own signatures on proclamations. And if that's something that this council is interested in, I'm happy to switch that to that format as well. Um, as I'll talk about later with some other proclamations and commendations and special observances, um, I had in mind coming up. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's fine. People can put it forward. My, my only concern is, um, if one person asks to put something forward and you bring it forward and it's, you know, something just ridiculous. I'm not saying anyone would do this, but just humor me for a moment. Well, you know, we want to say that, um, June is Alien Appreciation Month. I'm not going to support that, right? So I I would want a chance to either speak or say something after that person presents it to either show support or not support, something like that, if we're not going to have like at least two people. So, um, as long as there's that opportunity, um, I'd, I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Totally get you. I was very focused on the fact that I just had a continuant slapped on my desk and I didn't look down the dais. So your point's well taken. Um, any other comments? Or, um, questions for fellow counselors? I know you wanted to solicit feedback. Uh, Vice President LeBlanc?
Uh, I don't think we need a formal rule. Um, but I agree with, uh, Member Ludwig that, you know, if commentary, if an item made the agenda, commentary, um, should be provided. Um, and then I just had one change on, uh, page seven of seven. We're just missing the S on Robert's rules.
Which page?
It's, uh, page seven of seven. It's, uh, sixty one out of sixty five of our packet. We're just missing the apostrophe S on Robert's rules. That's all. But I was good with all the rules.
Further discussion? Council Ludwig.
So can I, can I just, um, can I offer the amendment that, um, that the council rules should also apply in the event we are on, uh, a Zoom schedule or a Zoom meeting?
Yeah. Um, Solicitor Angel, do you want to speak to that? How that would apply and work?
Yeah, the, the council rules, just like the OMA and just like APRA, um, in the ethics rules, apply to council business wherever council business is conducted. Just like it did during the pandemic that was that you, you don't need a specific rule that says these rules apply on Zoom, they, or whatever the virtual meeting platform may be, they apply whenever the council is in session and in whatever medium or mode it happens to be in session. So.
Okay. So it sounds like we don't, don't need an amendment then. Um. I would say that I did like that this is written in gender neutral to Solicitor Angel. Um, I know that that's a hard concept for some people. Uh, but I thought this was, was written accordingly. So thank you.
I double checked that because I knew last time it was a, it was a sticking point. I tend to agree. So especially with the majority female counsel that we had.
And, and for the record, I, I wasn't told to make it gender neutral. I'm just wired that way. I just want to be clear. The only, the only other male we've ever had in my house, I think was a hamster. So that's, that's about it. Very sensitive to that.
Uh, further discussion for members of the council on this resolution? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item ten, Council President Communications, item A, uh, West Works St. Patrick's Day Parade. I just want to put this on the council's calendar. Um, we were, we all, we're all sent an email from the organizers from West Warwick. Um, myself, Counselor Ludwig and her daughters and, um, Counselor Shockley marched in this last year with the town manager. And, um, it was, it was a nice parade. Um, it's one that's got a lot of history to it. Um, I went to it a lot when I was a kid, goes through right down to Nautic. The school department, I know marches in it as well and other Kent County related community organizations. Um, if you're able to come, that would be great. I think it would be great if we could have a strong showing from the administration up here and the council. Um, and, uh, the meeting place is always the same. It was at, um, Ionadi Funeral Home over there on Washington Street. Um, if you have any other questions or if, um, anything else, I, I would like to let them know how many of us are, can attend or, and if there's some of us who maybe could attend, just let me know. So that way they have an idea. And then we know who to watch out for. Um, I can break out the sashes. Anne loved a good sash. Um, we have them that say council member and all that town, town administrator or whatever. So, um, happy to bring those. Um, but just want to put that on the radar. Um, so in case you guys missed that email, it kind of slipped through.
And that, on that, uh,
biting candy for the kids. They love you even more if you do that, having done this in the past. Bags of big candy bag, big bags of candy. Kids love it. They will love you for the entire parade if you pass that out while you're going.
Right. All right. Yeah. Item B, uh, twenty twenty three Town Council Public Observance Events Calendar. So, um, I kind of went through and wanted to consider having an idea of which ones we were going to consider for proclamations or commendations. So I wanted to throw these out there. If there are others that you would like to consider, please let me, uh, let me know and we can get it into the schedule. Um, and, uh, and, um, I know this was something that was kind of a little hotly contested last year, um, on how we did this, but I figured if we could get this out in front of, it got out in front of it. Um, some of these that we've done already each year, some of them are new traditions. Um, but if there's any I've missed or any that you would like to be considered, feel free to shoot me an email. Um, and, uh, we can, we can add it in there. Um. Any comments on either of those, um, items under, uh, communications? All right, great. Um, moving on to item twelve, council business matters carried over, vote to appoint a candidate to the position of town manager. Can I have a motion to table this item to our February twenty eighth? I'm sorry. Continue the item to, uh, the February twenty eighth town council meeting?
I will make the motion to continue this item to the twenty eighth.
Uh, motion from Vice President LeBlanc. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludwig?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative zero and the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item thirteen, introduction of new matters for the council. A presentation from Senator Gordon Rogers, District twenty one, Coventry, Foster, Situate, West Greenwich. Read potential state law on affordable housing developments. Uh, Senator, if you could come on up, um, just to introduce this, um, I had, uh, spoken with Senator Rogers and I know that Councilman Pasqua did as well. Um, there's some chatter at the state level with the, uh, one of the commissions what that deals with affordable housing. Uh, some legislation coming down the pike that would essentially make it so the state, wherever they wanted to put affordable housing could, uh, override all of your zoning laws. Um, so, um, he's been speaking to a lot of communities and talking about some amendments he'd like to, to make to this to, um, be able to protect, um, the towns and, and their zoning laws and where they can, where affordable housing goes in their communities. So I wanted to invite him to speak this evening.
Thank you. Uh, nice to meet you all again. Some of you have I met here before and some in the audience and things changes as usual. This, uh, this basically comes down to, uh, your ability to be a sovereign town to decide what you want and how you would like your town to move forward, kind of like your comprehensive plan that they require you to update. Funny thing is they somehow like to overrule it. Coventry is a little bit unique, uh, and, and just as general makeup, I've already been in front of West Greenwich, uh, Exeter, Gloucester. Uh, I got Situate coming up, Richmond coming up, Hopkinton. I think they got the gist of it out of me going there. And it's kind of putting a, a coalition type together, whether you want to vote on it or not. I know West Greenwich did. Gloucester's going to. Foster already has to, in the premise of a coalition to stand up. Again, Coventry is kind of unique where it's very long. And, and you have a very populated side and a very rural side. And it's also unique on how your council makeup is. Do you have a councilman at large in wards, correct? Or is it all just boards? All right. So you have a makeup where most of the towns that I've been in from, they're, they're at large. Each council member is, is, is responsible for the entire town entirety and they have a voice. Yours is broken up a little bit different where one side may be representing a rural area and the other side more populated area, which is unique in that itself. But at the end of the day, you still have a right of sovereignty. Uh, so what affects one end may affect another end. So what happened prior to COVID, uh, is the Senate side had put together a housing, municipal housing, not a, a housing committee to address what they're saying is a housing crisis in the state of Rhode Island. Once COVID hit, they haven't met since. I believe the House side had a separate rail and a committee put together with a couple of, uh, stake players. Uh, and you can get the list. I know the Gloucester town planners on there and a few other people through the state. They put the Builders Association on it. Uh, and a few other stake players. And it's clear the House side is coming forward with their agenda on to do something with the housing crisis with the low moderate income and the municipality is not reaching their 10%. And this committee had just recently finished up and their recommendations on is what the legislature is going to formulate their bills to address what they call the housing issue in the state of Rhode Island. It clearly is. But the concerning part about that, some of the recommendations were, uh, there were rural communities that have what they consider restrictive zoning. For example, do you have two acre zoning in your rural area?
Is it three or five?
Like my town Foster is five. And basically there, the recommendation was that was not conducive to the housing crisis. It was, uh, the opposite. And the setbacks and things as such need to be looked at. And it was almost like basically recommending that they're going to overrule your opportunity for your own sovereignty to set the destiny of your town as you see fit, which in itself is, is just concerning. I mean, there's, there's a reason why you sit here and there's a reason why you represent the people that elected you. So the thought was to come together. And I had sat down with the League of Cities and Towns. The League of Cities and Towns, if you guys don't know, is basically your lobbyists that you pay for. And the way the League of Cities of Towns is set up is they have an operating budget. Uh, prior to this session, this is my fifth session since I've been up there and I came from a municipal like you. And I'm the secretary on municipal housing because it really is my wheelhouse with municipalities. So I know what you guys are dealing with. So, uh, the League of Cities and Towns basically has an operating budget and it's, it's divvied up by population by the thirty nine communities. I know Foster pays like twenty eight hundred or thirty two hundred. Uh, but that's based on our four thousand five hundred residents. So I'm sure Coventry pays more. And it seemed like when I was sitting on the council, uh, it didn't seem like we were getting a fair share as the rural communities. Whenever the bigger cities came forward, you know, the photo ops were there and things were getting pushed through. But when soul of issues came that really affected rural communities, we never really got a fair shake. Uh, so prior to what happened in West Greenwich, and I don't want it attached to me, I had to sit down with the League of Cities and Towns and, and, and relay to them my concerns of why I actually became a state senator because of the issues uh, that I just mentioned, and we weren't getting a fair shake. And they did reassure me. Uh, Ernie Almonte is the new, the new head, the chairman, uh, and Jordan Day is the executive director, assistant executive director, that they were going to take what I said into concern because everything I brought to them made sense. And since then they came out with their legislative agenda on what they're gonna fight for. And you, I could have almost wrote half the book for them because it was chapter ninety they brought up, which I put bills in for that. And it was, uh, the rural community's concern on overreach. Uh, like we saw through the ADUs accessory dwelling units that has changed over the past several years. I don't know if you were aware of that. Uh, accessory dwelling units. It used to be by right, you were entitled to an in-law, in-law, where you could take care of an in-law and as immediate family member. Well, over the past few years, that changed. They took family member out and you could be anybody. And if you do accept ADUs in your town, people can actually put them in a shed, a garage, a detached, detached. It doesn't have to be attached like. a detached, detached. It doesn't have to be attached like it used to be with an in-law, had to be attached to the main residence, look conducive to the main residence and fit in. And they're slowly moving that to open up the ability for builders to build more on the ADUs. But I digress. But at the end of the day, the, the Speaker of the House is extremely upset that the rural communities are getting in front of this before the legislation is even written. In my personal opinion, it was kind of arrogant. The statement that he said was, he was calling those nimby's and discriminatory actions, which his comment was they'll have an opportunity to speak on the bills when they come in front of committee. And my response to that is maybe you should have sat down with us at the table and listened to what we had to say on top of what the committee recommendations were before you make the legislation. But it's coming out. It hasn't been formulated yet. But I think he's on notice that we're watching it extremely closely. And it will affect every rural community and your sovereignty to dictate the destiny of your town. It's coming. What I'm recommending is stop thinking out of the box where you can come to the table and come up with solutions that fit your town and try and come up with them. For, for like, for example, I'll talk about Situate and Foster, which is also part of my district. And I, and I back up to the story of how we're at where we are with respective to those two towns. We're extremely rural and I can tell you, my family's been in Coventry, Situate and Foster for at least 100 years, five, six or more generations. That the reason why Foster and Situate is extremely rural is because of the Situate Reservoir. Back in the turn of the century, we had our mills, Situate, you had multiple mill villages, Rockland, Kent, Ashway, there was Ashland, there was multiple mills, mill buildings on that Patuxet River came coming all the way through. And when the Industrial Revolution hit the city of Providence, and we also had a trolley. The Industrial Revolution hit and they had to come up with a solution. And you know what they did? They came out and said, you know what? We're going to condemn 7,000 acres of land. We're going to tear down all your factories. We're going to put all your farmers out of work and we're going to pay for your land and you're on your way. A lot of people committed suicide. All those factories sit underneath water now. There are some communities that have met their 10%. And it was a little easier for them. One, they had public transportation and two, they converted some of their mills that were left from that industrial boroughville and certain towns like that that met it. They had the ability to convert some of their mills into multi-use density housing to meet their 10%. We don't have that ability on Foster Gloucester because our own mills now are under 80 feet of water. But the end of the day, we're rural because of what the inner city did in the turn of the century. So now turning around after they've, they've rode that wave of financial greatness. Now they not there anymore, but now they want to, they want to push their ideas out because now they're dealing with the aftermath of that. And usurping our authority to dictate your own destiny is not the way to do it. So for example, with Foster and Situate, some suggestions would be, we don't have a commercial park. That the biggest issue is the density overriding the density. They'll come in and they'll take a piece of property where you would only be able to have one or two family houses or a single family house and they'll trample your density and allow multiple houses on that one piece of property as long as a certain percentage of them meet low moderate income. So look, with Foster and Situate, I'm suggesting with them that maybe they come to the table and say, it's coming. They're going to do it. But you can let them dictate your destiny or you can come up with some creative ideas to say, you know, this is a better way of doing it. So that's in Coventry is unique. It's, it's much different than the other rural communities. So a couple of bills that we're putting in, me and Mike Chippendale sat down. And to understand how low moderate housing works, there's really a, an image of it that's, that's really not a true factor. It's really not bad housing. It really does look nice and it all fits in. But it's the density part of it. I keep repeating, you know, it's not that one house. It's multiple houses. So low moderate income housing works is based on it's 80% of your average. So it takes, and I'll give you a couple of examples. I know I'm jumping around, but I'll let you understand what it looks like. If guys are familiar with the clam shack on 101 in Situate. You know where the golf carts used to be and a little train, the apple orchard. I know it's way on that side of the state, but it's really not that far. You guys are not familiar with that?
Basically.
All right. So if you looked across the street from that, you'll actually see where the density was pushed a little bit and they put some nice condo units in. A percentage of them are low moderate income. How about 102 by the senior center in Situate? You know, that going down the hill, you know where the condos are going down the hill?
Yeah.
The John Mahoney Development for the sake of a different argument, you familiar with that? So those, though a percentage of those are, they put those six units in, they wouldn't have been allowed. But because they didn't meet the 10%, they came in and they increased the density and they put a certain amount of them in for low moderate income housing. They all look exactly the same. So low moderate income is based on your average house sales or average condo sales. So let's take Foster, for example. If you look at the Rhode Island Housing Book and it's something I get every year and look into, Foster's average income is around 98,000. And the average house is around four, let's say 400, 425,000. It's a lot of money. I don't know. I couldn't do it if I wasn't living on the same family farm. But the way it works within your community, it's 80% of the average. So an average low moderate income house would probably be in Foster would be at around 325,000 or 330,000. Still a big chunk of money. It would be 80% of your average and you would have to qualify to have at least 30% of your salary or income or job wealth going to your total household expenses, mortgage and utilities and insurance. You would qualify for one of those houses. Those houses, and here's the problem with trying to make legislation work because everybody, every community has people that actually are living in their community that would actually qualify for low moderate income housing if they were to buy, but they're in housing now. May have been there through families, but they would on paper qualify. The low moderate income housings are deed restricted. And when I say deed restricted, that's what I explained. Certain people have to qualify. They have to have a housing advocate manager that qualifies them on their income and their 30%. And they're able to purchase that in that development where there were multiple houses and a certain amount of them met that density with, increase the density by putting them in. They move in on a, on a 30 year, it's a 30 year deed restricted. So let's say for the sake of argument, President Lima, you purchased the house at 450 market rate next door. I get in on the one that's 300,000. And I qualified, I paid 300 for the same basically looking house as, as you did. Five years down the line, you decide to sell your house. You can sell it for fair market value. Somebody comes in, wants to give you 700,000 for it. You're walking away with 300 plus equity out the door. My house, same year, five years later, I want to sell mine. It's tied to that current year's value. So I may only be able to sell mine. I paid 325 for it. I maybe only sell it for 330 if I'm lucky. It, it wasn't meant, it's still deed restricted. Once I walk out the door, somebody else who qualifies for that comes in and purchases it for 330. They up that deed restriction for 30 more years. It gets renewed and it's, it's set that way. I'll give one example, Block Island. And we had, they had to raise the bar in Block Island because believe it or not, a, 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 a beginning starting school teacher on Block Island with a husband, then a beginning starting police officer on Block Island were caught in the middle where you would want them to live on Block Island, they're part of your community. But they didn't qualify financially with their incomes to buy any average house sale on Block Island was out of their reach. No bank would give them a loan because they didn't qualify. But yet they didn't qualify for the low moderate income. Because they were above that 30, 80. So they had to adjust that in Block Island to just get their police officers and school teachers starting their career.
So what do you recommend for us as next steps?
What I'm recommending is support one of the bills that we're putting in. I know I'm long-winded.
Do you have bill numbers?
Not yet. They just went down. I haven't got an LC number. So what me and Mike worked on is like I said, we have people in the community that do qualify, but because of that deed restriction, I've seen bills going, it says, hey, we have a trailer park in Exeter. We should be able to use that because those people surely meet that. But how do you do that? You can't because they own the trailer. And they, they're not deed restricted. So what we want to do is we want to be allowed towards our 10%. Me and Michael working on a bill and it may be a rolling, because it hasn't come out of, of being written yet. It may have a rolling deed restriction on it. So it'll meet that bar. Or if we can do it without that, it would be allowing your town through your HHS or whatever to, to go out and allow people to qualify. And if they meet that 80, 30, you may have more than 3%. We're looking at trying to start it at 3%. Let's say 10% of your community actually qualifies and applies. You would be allowed to use the lowest 3% of income earners that meet that bracket, the ones that are almost falling off the abyss towards your 10%. Because why should we not count the people that we are taking care of that meet those financial hardships that we have now? And we can't count them, but we've got to put more housing up to allow to have to count more when you already have them. So it's, it's not asking for the whole thing. It's, we're starting it at 3%. So we could allow those. So any support from the municipalities on that would be helpful.
And are those, are those, are your amendments in line with what the league is proposing for amendments?
They, once the league sees that, I'm sure they'll get behind them because we've already spoke to them on what we wanted to do.
Okay.
And they thought it was a pretty good idea. So they'll definitely get behind it, I'm sure. And there may be adjustments to it, but it's, it's really, we understand. We need to be able to look at it as there's a problem, the state's going to come forward with some ideas, but you need to be able to grab the bull by the horns and say, you know what? We understand you have a problem. You know, we, we have other ideas that might work better for our community because we know what Coventry is like.
So is there a resolution floating around that other communities are approving or what do you?
What they're doing is they're approving a couple of communities and Gloucester is going to be bringing it back up. They listened to what I had to say. And then they didn't vote on it that night. Two communities did. The other two communities are going to be coming forward with a support the concept of rural communities sticking together as a single voice to support as one voice. It's, 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 it's almost like when one community speaks out against something, the, the voice gets lost. But when you have multiple communities that on the generalized, we are supporting. It, it's a bigger voice. It puts the legislatures back on their heels to say, let's slow this down. Because if they hear nothing, it just gets thrown. And from what I'm seeing, they're already upset that the rural communities are starting to say, hey, you know what? We're, we're going to stick together on this and we're going to be one voice versus just one community. So it's more of holding them accountable. And in the meantime, I would suggest thinking of ideas outside the box because it is coming. But you need to, my advice is if, if nothing is done and your community is different than Foster and Gloucester, they're going to dictate your destiny. Instead of yourself being able to say, hey, we've got a solution that might work. And I can give you some ideas. I think with some of my communities that don't have a commercial, an industrial park, where remember it's a density issue and it's public transportation because a lot of times public transportation was needed. And there's very little busing in Foster and Gloucester and stuff. 42% of my roads are still dirt in Foster. So what we might portray in Foster and I'm advocating is go to the state and listen. We know there's a problem. We would like to create that industrial area and we would like to purchase, let's say for the argument, we've located 300 acres of land that we'd like to purchase. We don't have the money to do it. So if the state wants to, you know, step up and provide some of that money for the town to purchase it, we will set aside a percentage of that land. And we will specifically zone it with a higher density for mixed use residential, commercial, retail. So the other part, we can start investing in a, in a commerce park that will generate revenue. Commerce park is going to be in a high, you know, high traffic area where they can easily make, meet, the state can meet a public transportation bus stop. And the people that are living there will have be a close vicinity to public transportation for away jobs or within the commercial area for jobs within a walking distance. So that's kind of what Foster might come forward to. So you might want to put your thinking caps on, kind of do the same thing or formulate something different. I don't know your makeup.
Yeah.
That's just an example.
Yeah. That was a lot. Thank you. I just want to open up to members of the council for discussion or questions. He's thrown out a lot in terms of potential action or next steps. So just wanted to hear from the council.
And again, real quickly, they're going to be formulating bills on their side. We're going to know what their hand is in the next two or three weeks because those bills will start being formulated off that committee's suggestion. So you're really going to see what's coming up. Probably in our, our deadline just came in on our bills and I, I threw those one down a legal left predicting what they might do on their side.
Okay. Councilman Pasqua?
Thank you for coming tonight, Senator Rogers. We met a couple of weeks ago and talked about this. It really involves my district, Western Coventry. So it's on my radar for sure. And I appreciate you taking the time a couple of weeks ago, meeting with me about this. I think, I think I really want to see some bills and, and see the language of what's being proposed at the state level to understand and, and great detail what, what they, what they want to do. So that way we can formulate a plan of action. I, I think we need to do a little bit of homework before we, before we go.
Absolutely. I just want to get this on your radar. So it, it, so we're not reacting real fast in the future of what's coming. I'm trying to slowly meet all the towns and let them know. I see it's coming. So if it's on your radar, you'd be able to hit the ground running and maybe in the meantime, think of some ideas to, you know, that would work for your community.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yep. No, just want to echo what Member Pasqua said. I really appreciate you coming tonight. If you could just email us the bill numbers once you have them, I would like to take a read through before we take any action.
Yeah, many important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Any further discussion on that? All right. Hearing None, we'll move on to item 14, public comment for undocketed items. Do we have any members of the public present here who would like to make a comment on an undocketed item? Any members on Zoom? Going once, going twice, three times, public comment is now closed. We'll now move on to executive or closed session items. Do I have here a motion to enter executive session for the following? Executive closed session pursuant to Rallin General Law 42-46-5A2, re prospective litigation.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President LeBlanc?
Second.
Second from Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing None, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Lima had left the dais at 7:53?
Lugwick.
I'm sorry, Lugwick. Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Three in the affirmative. Zero in the negative. Motion passes.
We will now go into executive session. We will now go into executive session.
I don't know. You, you need to be careful as a, as a company person.